All ready? I could count down.
Sure.
Count, counting down ten.
Meeting of March 21st, 2024. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
I am here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Here. Can we have a report out from closed session?
We're off to a good start here tonight. Council met in closed session on last Saturday and Sunday and provided direction to consultant and no other report at this point.
Thank you. Moves us on to adoption of the agenda. Can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please. But we're not doing roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That moves us to oral communications, number one. And are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? I do have a slip from Michelle Salmon.
Actually, you have three slips from Michelle Salmon. I have three issues I want to bring up. The first one is the CCNRs for Landmark and all of the Northeast Ridge Development. And recently, there have been approvals for additions or closing in certain people's open courtyard. And I'm very concerned that we're not following the CCNRs to the letter of the law on the CCNRs, in particular, changing the water flow, adding, increasing the lock coverage and those type of things. And one of the things is, I've sent you a letter today with a copy of the CCNRs, all 58 pages of them. And I'm, I'm not happy about that. And I'm very concerned. There was a, an incident back in June of 2023 where 12 houses in Rolling Hills collapsed because of a water leak in the system. So it's, we're vulnerable there, that is landfill. And I want to make sure that the CCNRs are followed to the letter of the law and that they are interpreted correctly before we just approve these additions. We denied an addition in 2008 for Ten Knuckleberry Court for this very thing. My second concern is Clippy Hill. It has been over almost a decade since the Toll Brothers got the final approval to develop. I don't know the exact occupancy date, but Clippy Hill is still not in the public trust landwise. It's still not been deeded to the county. Apparently, there's some disagreement about who's going to maintain the V-ditches. This cannot go on any longer, really. It needs to get taken care of. And the third area that I am extremely concerned about is, I understand the need for having shall I say, real estate negotiations in closed session. But I think that designating property as surplus property before you have real estate negotiations should be done in the public view. The incident with the property up at West Hill, that is public land. And it should have been brought before the public and made into surplus property if you had decided to do that with full public hearings and public knowledge about it instead of behind closed doors. And then if you want to negotiate a price for it with BLT or some other purchaser, you can do your real estate negotiations behind closed doors. But I feel it was very wrong to, to have that discussion behind closed doors. I felt that there was no opportunity for the public to really make comment that I didn't feel listened to at all about it. I think that it's a very important buffer zone, 44-foot buffer zone for fire that could take out the Northeast Ridge, take out, you know, part of Crocker Industrial Park. And yet, we're going to allow them to build a parking lot right up to the, to the V-ditch. And I, I think that's wrong, especially when so many of us have had our insurance notification that our fire insurance is being canceled in Brisbane. So I don't think that was a prudent decision, and I think it should have been done in front of the public. And if you decided after a public hearing to make that property surplus property or any other property in Brisbane surplus property, then you can do your negotiations behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I see a raised hand from Chris F.
Okay, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Chris Plarkowski. I just happened to be reviewing the commute.org presentation about ridership totals. And for the most recent report, I'm sorry, they don't have an exact date here, but it was presented in February. I was surprised to see that the Brisbane-Crocker Park shuttle is the busiest, has the best ridership of any of the other shuttles that commute.org runs. Of course, Caltrain shuttle is a little ways down there. But I'm seeing that there's an opportunity and a willingness for Brisbane residents to make, or, or employees of Brisbane, companies based here in Brisbane, to make use of these shuttles. Now that Caltrain is going to be modifying their schedule in the fall with the electric trains and essentially doubling the frequency. We're going to be seeing a train every 30 minutes at the Bay Shore Station. I think there's a real opportunity to coordinate with them and see if we can expand use of shuttles here. And I should add that as somebody getting older, I, I look at Brisbane and I wonder, can I retire? Stay in place here as, as I get older? And I'm not seeing that unless we improve public transportation. Unfortunately, our shuttles are a key piece of our public transportation, but severely limited. So I think this is a great opportunity, and I hope we take advantage of that.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then we will move on to consent calendar. Can I get a first and a second to approve the consent calendar, items B through F?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. And of all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Although, anybody opposed? No one? Okay. We'll move on to new business. And this is to receive a report back from council subcommittee evaluating various election issues. Staff report, please.
So far, so good there. Okay. So tonight, we're going to review some information with regards to an item that the city council discussed back, I believe, in February and formed a council subcommittee. This is coming to you in a little bit different format than you're used to in the sense that this is a very preliminary report that tries to outline some of the resources that are going to be required to look at these issues. Nothing here tonight is a suggestion of an action forward or a pathway forward at the moment. The subcommittee met once, and they're obviously going to need to meet many more times before you would see any sort of recommendation that would come back to you. We have identified that we believe it will take about 10 hours of staff time, primarily with the city clerk, to research the various term limits in San Mateo County. That is not just getting the information on the term limits, but also looking at the various enabling ordinances that various cities have, because there's obviously going to be nuances there. I did provide you some information with regards to the process for looking at district elections and doing some of the demographic work. I think, thinking about this further, I think it would probably be helpful if the subcommittee had an opportunity to meet with one or more demographic companies to kind of fully understand that process and what's involved with that and the steps involved. So I didn't put that in this particular staff report, but I would suggest that we bring this back to the subcommittee and have that further analysis done with, meeting with the, with the demographers. I've talked to two of them at this point. Different, a little bit different approaches that they're, they're taking. But the cost, the cost estimates are probably pretty, pretty similar in terms of what I put in here. And then the final item on the directly elected mayor. Subcommittee can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't believe we spent a lot of time discussing that. So I don't think we really kind of dealt into some of the pros and cons. We also, I think, need to understand better what the responsibilities of an elected mayor are under a general law city in the state of California versus a charter city. So that's, I think, an analysis that needs to be done. The legal framework for particularly the term limits and the district elections are something that the city attorney is going to need to weigh in on. You may want to ask him questions tonight and just get some preliminary thoughts on, on that part. So if the council is of a mind, we can move forward with some of this research based on the resources we've identified. Bring this back to the subcommittee and embellish what we've got here tonight. Again, tonight was really just to give you a sense of what, what's going to be involved to kind of move this process forward. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Would members of the subcommittee like to address any of the items that staff addressed?
You know, it's pretty straightforward. You know, we felt at the sub, at the subcommittee level that, you know, the, the information that would be needed would cost some money and some time. And that we felt it was appropriate to bring it back to the council to get your feedback before, you know, initiating the, the work. And so I think what Clay has laid out, you know, totally makes sense. I know. Is that how you see it?
Yeah, I mean, we, we discuss all kinds of possible scenarios of what happens when you go to districts, what happens when you have term limits and all these different things. And, you know, there's just not a constructive conversation that can occur where you can make decisions around these things when there's so much information that's lacking. And that, you know, is going to require, we had so many questions and things that we felt needed to be evaluated, but because the committee, the subcommittee can only spend $1,000 without approval, there's no way for us to begin to contemplate this issue when so much of the required information is outstanding. So at this point, the committee, the subcommittee is at a standstill unless the council would like to authorize spending at least some money for staff time. I anticipate, you know, if we wanted to move forward with a demographer of any kind, which helps inform how you actually parse out districts and things like that. That's, you know, that's obviously an even bigger cost, but some of these things we can start just sinking our teeth into now. I don't think that this is the last time, you know, that we would be back here to seek funds to explore this issue. But it's a good start.
Okay. Council, questions for staff or the committee members? Colleen, do you want to start it off?
Well, I'm somewhere between questions for staff committee and discussion. So do you want me to wait?
If you'd like to wait, we can do that. And do, do you have any questions for staff?
I do. My questions are actually for Tom. Tom, I did quite a bit of personal research into all of these items, particularly how they pertain to San Mateo County and other cities that are small. I didn't find a city that had under 10,000 voters who made any of these decisions. So that is one of my questions is what does this look like for a city that has under 3,000 voters? But the thing that kept coming up over and over again, Tom, was that every city that went district in San Mateo County is bringing their school board along as well. And so if we want to look at this item as a holistic thing, I think we need to include our school board and our school district. Because we represent Daly City and Brisbane on the Brisbane School District, and we have one member from Daly City and four members from Brisbane. So I think this needs to be a holistic approach so we can come back to the community with some very honest answers about what all of these things mean and what they cost, the pluses and minuses up and down the county. Can, can you add some light to my ramblings just now, please? Thank you, Tom.
On district size, Councilmember Cunningham, the, I didn't have, I didn't find it, but I do recall there being guidance, and it may actually have been a regulation that cities below a certain size should not go to districts. But with the interpretation in 2022 of the California Voting Rights Act, which not only bolsters what was lost at the federal edevil, but goes a little farther, that is gone. So I didn't find anything even in, as like a best practice about taking city size into account on district voting. I may have missed something, but I, I didn't find it. And that's, I probably spent more time on that than anything else because I was curious. As far as cities aligning with school districts, it really probably depends entirely on the boundaries of the school district. Of course, most in the state are going to align with the municipality or sometimes the county if it's a small county population-wise. But not always. I believe Brisbane, school district versus the city is slightly different, if memory serves, although not massively.
Yes.
And the, as far as the taking the, the number, getting to demographics, that too has sort of been taken away from, it's just not a major concern anymore because of the California Voting Rights Act. Meaning, the focus is on are people being disenfranchised? And if so, how do we get them the vote? As opposed to, we don't, you know, if it's under 3,000, we don't have to look at this. If it's this, we don't have to look at that. That stuff seems to have gone away. The only one I thought was still there was the population, and I, I didn't find it.
Okay. I have one more question for Tom. So Tom, speaking with other members of San Mateo County who have gone district and are either very happy with it or very unhappy with it, one of the things that came up over and over again in my questions to different people was the fact that, you know, if you've got a small population, you could have, depending on how we would ever, district Brisbane, you, you could have a district where nobody wants to run. So what happens then?
Well, in the extreme, a council member is appointed. But what usually happens, and I'm not aware of an instance of an appointment in, I can remember one in about, probably 20 years ago, down south. And that was because nobody wanted to fill a seat. A member had passed away. In this case, the, if nobody wants to run, frankly, what ends up happening all the time is somebody who didn't really want to compete for it, didn't have the time, didn't have the money to run a campaign, whatever the reason, did not feel like they could put the time and effort into a campaign. When they hear that there's nobody else running, they tend to put themselves out there to get the signatures and get on the ballot. And I, I'm not saying that in a vacuum. I've seen that repeatedly. Thank you.
I have clarification from the subcommittee. We asked, we asked staff to specifically look to see if there were cities in California that went to districts that had a similar population size to us. We said that, you know, Ingrid could totally research term limits within San Mateo County or the role of the mayor in San Mateo County and those issues within county. But I personally wanted to see if there were examples of cities similar to us in size that made the decision to go to districts, how it played out. You know, what their public process was like, how they determined how to draw the district lines, those sorts of things. And then any, like, if there was any press about what happened once that city had moved to districts and what, how, you know, voting occurred, what the turnout was like, all of those things. So I think that is, it's really important for us to have some case studies of cities of similar size. That was requested. I do think Portola Valley.
Woodside.
Oh, Woodside.
Woodside currently has district.
Woodside went to districts. I don't know, what's their, anyone know a rough guess on the population?
They're just about our size, I think, just slightly bigger.
Okay. So anyhow, that's an example within San Mateo County. But I was hoping that we could get like a few different, you know, case studies. So.
Thank you.
And that was going to require a little bit more. It's going to, it would be a lot easier for Ingrid to get the information relatives to San Mateo County, but broadening a search outside, you know, requires more hours. But I think that that information is really key. So.
Okay, if that's the end of the questions, I will open it up to public comment before we go into discussion. And I have a slip from Nancy Laximana.
Thank you. Yes, I'm glad you brought up Woodside because if you read their study and their communication from the demographers, they were very excited. They got communities to, community people to give input as to which of the districts they thought worked. Having a consultant make sure that all of the areas are equally or very close to within 10% of population and demographics, an incredible amount of work. If you look at our demographics in the last couple of years, we have changed. And as we talked in the letter that we gave you two months ago, 45 people signed it. We truly believe that there are issues that should be addressed and addressed to transform us, to move us forward. We truly believe that it brings accountability to not only the district, but also to the people who represent us. So I really encourage you, because I know some of you have talked to people in the community that did sign that petition. Petition, meaning just to go out and please create the subcommittee and do the research. And we're very much committed to knowing and believing that this would work. So I think there's advantages to all three. Term limits has never stopped people from running. It encourages people to run. And it also, same thing, mayor at large. The advantage there is, is that you're all busy. You know, a lot of this is not your full-time job. If you had a dedicated mayor representing the city, you will have more accountability and more continuity, especially with a new city manager. District at large brings accountability and representation to the people who live in that area. It also is an easier way to campaign because you don't have to campaign the whole city. So you bring accountability and representation to your area. So I highly encourage you to step forward because people are watching and people really would like you to research this with conviction to take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Michelle?
I really feel at this point that Brisbane is too small to go to districts. I don't think it would accomplish what people are thinking it would accomplish. Perhaps once the baylands are built out and we really did have, you know, really a large, separate area, a, a community, it would, it might make a difference. But I personally have campaigned door-to-door at the Northeast Ridge every single time I've campaigned for anything, including some of you. And, you know, people, some people are interested, some people are not. But I, I think that having districts at this point, at our size, will only further fracture Brisbane. And I, I really don't think it's a good idea. I also think it's really hard to have a mayor elected as a mayor by the people because that person would serve for four years as mayor. And I think that's a really long time. And I, I think that being a general law city for Brisbane, the way that we've been structured has been really to our benefit for the last, you know, what, 50, almost 60 years since 1961. So I feel like it's going to cost us a lot, and I don't feel like that we'll really reap the benefits. I think that the integration of the different sectors of Brisbane has been quite thorough. And I don't feel like the ridge is left out. I really don't. I think a lot of people there participate that want to participate. So I feel like this is very premature, but do the research. I hope the people at Brisbane have an opportunity to decide on this themselves, and maybe we should look at also the voting records. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Do we have anyone online?
We have a raised hand from Roland.
Okay. Please go ahead, Roland.
The opportunity. With regard to district thing, I don't think we should be discounting this at this time. We definitely want to wait until we bring the consultants on board and we start looking at the demographics. And I think at that time, we'd be in a much better position to decide whether we want to go with district or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised?
No more, no more hands raised, Madam Mayor.
I'm, I'm sorry, no more? Okay. With that, we'll close the public comment and move on to discussion. Would you like to kick us off? Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an interesting issue, and I think the first thing that I think of is, where did this come from? Since 1961, we've had a general law city with a city manager. We've had a five-member council. We've had a mayor chosen from within the council, and it's worked. Suddenly, nothing's working. I don't understand where this is coming from. But that being said, Brisbane has a history of being fair, being thoughtful, changing with the times. Demographics are changing. None of us dispute that. We serve as representatives of the residents. That means we're accountable to the residents. What the residents want, they should get. I believe that. Tonight, I had hoped with this staff report that the ad hoc committee, and I'm not trying to that the Ad-Hoc Committee, and I'm not trying to make disparaging remarks about you, would bring forth some information, and we have very little at this point. That being said, I think probably all of us have dipped our toes in the water on looking into some of these issues. And I was very surprised at what we don't know about them. And my concern is discussions going around town, because I've asked a couple people, what do you know about these? Just you tell me what you know. And the information was all over the map. And there are a lot of intricacies. I just heard Michelle say a mayor four years. San Bruno has a mayor for two years. I heard Nancy Laxman talk about the authority of the mayor. Some cities with an elected mayor, the mayor has veto power. Some, they do not. Some, the mayor is the authority figure that runs the city. But if you have a city manager, that's usually not the case. So there are a lot of different ways this works. What if you have districts? Do you get to vote for the whole council or only one person in your district where then the other four council members are decided by everybody else? Is, is that something you want? I'm not saying plus or minus, but these are very intricate things that we need to think about and think through and have all the facts. The other part, very simple thing that could be done right now, and I started doing it. We all serve on, on county committees. And I started asking people in other cities, if they were on districts, how's it going? Some of them, they're new on it. Some of them like it, some of them don't. One thing that came up was it's hard in some districts to get anybody to run. And so you end up with one person running, unopposed. And one person in another city told me that this fall, they're all upset because the person running, nobody wants. And they're going to get elected. So there are all of those intricacies, there's lots of different ways to do it. We need to have facts. You may know by now, I know my colleagues know. And it's probably a joke that I like details and I research. And I don't have any, I don't have any information. So all we've done is touched the tip of the iceberg. And this is a major change. This isn't just, oh, we're going to do something different. And the fact that it hasn't been brought up in 50-plus years tells you something. So I'm not saying it's not a good idea. What I'm saying is, it's not, we want apple pie. Do you want apple pie à la mode? Do you want a crumb crust? Do you want a graham cracker crust? There's a lot of versions, is what I'm saying. And you really have to know what you're getting into. And there are three items we're talking about, and I'm not against any of them. I serve at the pleasure of the public. I'm open to anything. I can tell you, I have an open mind and you'll say, you have an opinion. Yes, I do. But when I come in this door, I always remind myself, any one of you can change my mind, and I have changed my mind. But I think we need information. Don't you want to make an informed decision? And as a council member tonight, I don't have enough information. I'm also concerned about, in the staff report, do we want to jump into consultants? My idea of consultants, because I hear a lot of this from residents, why are we always paying all these consultants money? Why don't we do this stuff in-house? It's always, we gotta hire a consultant. I think there's a lot we can find out on, on our own, staff and the Ad-Hoc Committee. I've already done some research. At least come back to us with some facts to start. And again, I'm not berating you, I'm, I'm making a plea for this. Before we get into consultants, let's see what we're dealing with. I think that's prudent. We just had half a million dollars that we deferred from our budget last year, that we couldn't afford to do capital improvements, that were not extraneous. They were necessary, they should have been done. If we just start on this with what I read in this report, we're going to spend 10% of that defrayed capital improvement projects. Over $50,000, maybe $100,000, because a lot of times, estimates are just estimates. I, I can't feel like that's prudent to do until we start. We can collect a lot of facts. We can do fact-finding with other cities. I think that's an honest and fair way to start. Let's accumulate facts, then we can talk about it in public hearings, we can talk about it at council meetings. We need to inform the residents. We don't want to just put this on a ballot. Everybody knows if you say, you like apple pie, don't you? Most people go, yeah, I do. But if you frame the question, do you like apple pie with a graham cracker crust? Some people go, oh my God, I hate that. So I think we owe it to everyone to have all the facts at hand. And we don't have anything close to that. And I, I, I just cannot go with spending money until we know what we're dealing with. We just, we, we don't have the money to do that. So I'm not against anything. I honestly am not. But I want to know more. That's the prudent thing to do. That's what I'd like to see us do. Thank you.
I think just for clarification, based on the staff report, the Subcommittee, what the Subcommittee needs to move forward in-house costs would be $19,000 to analyze district elections, plus 10 hours of staff time for term limits. There's no estimate on what 10 hours is equivalent to in terms of spending.
The, the, the staff time, we would need authorization to move for, forward with. Going back to my comments at the beginning, was I suggested that we not move forward with the demographic study at this point, that we bring that back to the Subcommittee to meet with a demographer, to start to understand that. We could also look at census track information, which is a level of information. It, it's not what you would need if you're actually going to move forward, but at least it gets you kind of a start. So we can do some of that stuff. But the, the staff time to do the, the basic research that we talked about, I think, is what I'm looking for tonight. Is just to go ahead, to go ahead and do that. So that's, it's a cost, it's a soft cost, it's not an addition to your budget.
The Subcommittee isn't asking to be authorized to hire a consultant by any means, but it, these issues are going to take more than $1,000 worth of staff time. So if you were trying to figure out, is it your appetite to get more information about this? We cannot, like, there were so many questions that Cliff and I had, all about a lot of the issues that you brought up, we studied a lot of that. But there's a definite gap in any ability to try to parse out what's best for Brisbane without a, an anal, a detailed analysis and research that's beyond what we're authorized to spend. So at this point, it's just, do you want to move forward with getting the information? And once we have it, the Subcommittee can come back with a more detailed report of information that is going to be very helpful to you and to the public. From there, we as a body can decide, okay, yes, let's continue to move down this road and consider hiring a demographer, right? If you want to figure out how to do district, districts, you have to hire a demographer to figure out exactly how the district line should be drawn. It's a misconception, which I've heard in the public, oh, we can just give the ridge, you know, the ridge will have a district and the Baylands could be a district and then Central Brisbane could be three districts. That's absolutely not how it works. It will not shake out like that. It's all, it's, it's a very intricate process that involves looking at the demographics, the population, all of that. So I think that's just for clarity, where, what the Subcommittee is asking for. And we're prepared to, you know, get into more of a discussion about whether this is appropriate, but that can't occur when there's such a gap in what we know.
Yeah, you, you know, in the, in the staff report, you know, it, it talks about, you know, that, that we as a body, as a city council, you know, that we have a policy that if any issue is taking more than two hours of staff and consultant resources, an estimate of potential staff time and consultant costs be brought back to the council as a whole for discussion. And so that, that's why, I mean, you're absolutely right, we, we definitely need more information. But that's going to take the, the staff time. And, you know, quite frankly, it would take some consultant time as well. I, I know that Step 1 is, is only 6,500. The information that would come out of Step 1, I think is really important. You know, when you look at our total budget of, I don't know how many millions of dollars, $6,500 is, is, is a drop in the bucket. You know, so Step 1, it develops, or includes developing a demographic analysis that would include total population and voting population by counts of race and ethnicity. I, I think we need that information. I, I, you know, you could have staff, you know, kind of spitball it, but I don't think that does us justice and I don't think that does the public justice. I think we need to have a professional give us that information so that then, once we have that information comes back before the full council and we can decide, you know, does this make sense? Should we put it on the ballot? Should we move forward with additional analysis?
Should we decide outright?
Well, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, you know. Tom, you know, correct me if I'm off-base here, but, you know, when we look at, say for example, the term limits and electing a mayor, right? In the staff report, it says that Brisbane voters must approve, right? So that means it has to go on the ballot. We, we can't decide. Now, of course, we can say, well, you know, we, we don't want it to go on the ballot. You know, from direct, you know, from a direction from us, right? In the past, you know, when we've had things that go on the ballot, we do our due diligence, right? We have staff and legal look into it, and then we give direction.
Are you asking Tom a question? You asked him.
Yeah, so Tom, this.
Then you kept going.
Yeah, okay, you know what, I'm, I'm having Tom follow me here in case I have it incorrect, because I'm going to say, okay, Tom, do I, did I say that correctly? So. Right, okay, good. So, you know, the other way though, of course, is for the citizens to, you know, draft what they think should be the term limits or the, you know, how the mayor should be conducted, right? You know, four-year, you know, a four-year term or two-year term, whatever, right? And then they go out and get the signatures, and then that goes on the ballot. And, you know, I mean, of course, if we put it on the ballot, we know, like, all the, the Ts are going to be crossed, all Is are going to be dotted. Not so sure, you know, if it comes from the public and so, but if it is legal with what we vote on, then that's going to be the, the law of the land. Like, I get that correct, Tom?
Yes, you did, yep.
So, I mean, it is, it is important that we have, you know, that, that, that information.
Karen, do you want to weigh in?
Look, the only thing that I want to say is, quite frankly, and, and this is not on this issue, I am sick and tired up to here of us saying, it's only 6,500, it's only 12,000, it's only 10,000, it's only 50,000. We've wasted $85,000 out at the marina, we wasted another $50,000 here, then everywhere. I am pretty conservative relative to the money we spend on anything, anything. So for anybody to say to me, it's only $10,000, I don't buy it. I, I just can't go there. So I want us to be as conservative as possible with our money. Our finances are not in good shape. We're taking things out of reserve right now and we need to be very careful. We should use our staff to do the initial analysis, in my opinion. And if the information that they bring back to us should make us better equipped to then hone in on what we need to go find out with consultants. I am appalled at the amount of money that we have wasted on consultants in the last seven years. Absolutely appalled. So I'm not into spending money. I'm into having staff do the initial work, see what we come up with.
Okay, so you're into spending staff time, money?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I am.
Soft costs.
Soft costs.
So. So I think that a lot of this discussion brings up interesting complications and ramifications. To move forward, I don't think we're at the point where we need to know the demographics. We need to know what needs to be done and what costs need to be done in order to get us across the finish line, whichever finish line we're going for. I think that the Subcommittee really needs to go back and look at some things. You know, the consultant, the demographic study, is that going to just be race and ethnicity? Is it going to be income? Is it going to be homeownership? Is it going to have other constraints on it? What is the cost for the county and the state to review anything we send to them with a proposed district lines? What kind of costs would the city incur in holding an election? That's a district election compared to an at-large, an election? Whether or not there's going to be complications or, you know, pork barrel, where, say, one council member represents the area that's more down by the park and there's something that comes up with having live music in the park and those people hate it and everybody else is like, well, I don't have to live next to it, I don't care. What if it comes up that we have to put low-income housing in somebody's district? And we're all going to be pointing, saying, not in my district, her district can have it. What are we going to do when somebody has to move and they no longer live in that district? What is going to happen when, you know, there's all these things? Woodside was brought up and three of their council members are at large. So are you going to have everybody that is in a district can only vote for their people in their district? Or are we going to have people that, are we going to have electeds that are going to be running for a district and have to live in that wedge or squiggly line? But they can be voted on by everyone. There's all these things that need to come from the Subcommittee where they delve into the good, bad, and the ugly of what a district election can mean for the city governance, for the people, and for how the council operates and whether it can still operate really effectively.
Okay, okay. We cannot get into any of that stuff without, we, we, we did this already, all in circles, Cliff and I. Paul was there, we were all talking about it, we were talking about all the different scenarios, all of those things. I, we, we cannot make a decision. We can't even start having this conversation until we actually can direct staff to go and say, go out there and get us the examples, like you had Woodside, right? Go out there, get us the examples. What hap, has happened in similar cities? What are all of the ramifications? What are all of the consequences? What are all of the benefits? Are you going to authorize us to direct staff to explore these issues further? When we have the information, we can talk about it. That's all we want to know.
I haven't finished.
Okay, it just feels like, you know.
I'm not ganging up on anybody. I'm, I'm trying to let people know, you guys know what my concerns are and what I think it needs to go back to the Subcommittee to delve into.
We want to do that.
Okay.
We just can't, because you, we need to be authorized to do that. We want to do all those things, that's our intention. We would love to have come in here with a breadth of information, but simply it's going to require a lot of Ingrid's time. And do you want to let Ingrid do that work or not, so we can have that dialogue? That's it.
Well, I think that it needs, the scope of what the work needs to be done, needs to be discussed also. So for me, and I keep, didn't get to finish what I'm thought process before I get interrupted. You know, and I think that the mayor, the, the issues of the mayor are also something that really have ramifications. If we're going to go to a strong mayor that has veto power or other things, or that can go out and be the ambassador for Brisbane, because that's their full-time job, that's a lot of money. Some of the cities in, on the peninsula that have mayors, they get the same exact pay as everybody else. So they aren't able to go out and be that full-time ambassador that someone may want. Or maybe we don't need it because we have a city manager and we have staff. So there's a lot of things that need to be researched before. So there's a lot of things that need to be researched before we hire a consultant for demographics, because there's a lot of stuff that needs to be thought about. I do believe, in my opinion, I think we should authorize soft time of the staff. I don't think we should be hiring anyone to be doing things. I think once staff and the subcommittee get questions out there that they need answered, and, you know, make that list and, and really hone it down to what kind of questions that they need to ask, and what kind of research they need staff to do to make intelligent decisions, then we can move forward with discussing if we even wanna go there. And, you know, Cliff, yes, you're right, somebody could put it on the, you know, try to do a ballot initiative to put it on the ballot and force our hand. I don't think that would be wise without having the information of what it's going to do to how our government runs, but that is something that happens all the time, and, you know, good or bad, can go either way, depending on how the initiative is written. So it is something we'd have to take that chance on. But for me, I'm happy to give direction to the staff to, are you wanting to chime in?
I just wanted to chime in real quickly. There's a very significant legal context to all this, so I think we got the direction from the council tonight in terms of moving forward with the research. I think the city attorney's gonna wanna interact with you on a number of these issues, and I think it'd probably be best if we just move forward based on, on that action tonight.
Okay, I mean, are we all okay giving them the-
I'm happy to do this in all, I'm happy to do this as conservatively and try to keep costs down as much as possible. We're gonna get to a, we're gonna hit a wall at some point with what Ingrid is able to find out. We'll come back, we'll say, these are all the things that we contemplated, this is all the information that we have, here are the next ten questions that we feel need to be answered. Do you want to proceed with allocating budget to get those questions answered, or do you feel like the information we have here is enough to make a decision? We can do that in those small chunks and bite-sized pieces if you want, I have no problem with that, I just want to know that, like, you're, we can move forward looking into this, or we're just pulling the plug now. That's all I'm trying to, that's all I'm trying to parse out at this point.
Yeah, Clay, if I may, Clay, I have a question for you. So, you know, looking at the two steps, right? So step two is, you know, do an analysis of feasibility of drawing one or more majority-minority districts. So that, that, that's definitely, you know, a step where you've, you've gathered all the information, and now, based upon that information, go out and draw the districts. That seems a, a step that obviously doesn't need to be decided tonight, but I'm, right?
I'm not-
And I know, I know you, but, okay, so-
Well, I just wanna emphasize that all, what we wanna do tonight is just to get the authorization to do the research. I, I just wanna be clear on that. And you're absolutely right, that, that step two is way down the line after you've done a lot of the research and you make a decision that, yes, we do wanna pursue district elections. That's way, way down the line.
Yes. So, so I wanna focus on, on step one, because from, from my understanding, and, you know, maybe I, I don't have this right, but, you know, I kind of feel like, you know, in order to make a, a, an intelligent decision about whether or not to make a recommendation to the council from the subcommittee on, like, yeah, we should do district elections because here are these areas that have these demographics. And I don't know, I mean, are you, do you feel comfortable being able to give us that, that information, Clay? Or should we be getting that from a professional that can then say, yeah, these, these areas here, they have this, you know, these breakdowns, and, you know, and then we can get that advice also from the consultant that, yeah, based upon, you know, other cities that we've worked with, you, you're in, that makes sense? Or, no, it doesn't make sense for you. It just seems like that, that, that's information that we should have, I get about the sixty-five-hundred bucks, and, yeah, no one wants to waste any money, but this, this is about our elections, and to me, sixty-five-hundred dollars is not a small amount of, or too large a amount to pay. So, I don't know, Clay?
I think, I'm gonna stick with my answer, or my, the answer up to now. I think we just wanna be, get authorization to move forward so we can do some basic research and have that conversation with the committee. We do have certainly census information that we can provide to you, and then go from there.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Karen asked me first.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Colleen. Tom, this is for you. Something just struck me during this conversation just now that seems kinda icky. And, correct me, are we really looking at census information to find out where all the Asian people live in town, and where all the Hispanic people live in town, and where all the other people live in town? Because to me, that feels awful.
No, we can't. It's one census tract. I don't think, we're all one census tract. So demographer, from my understanding, right, is gonna go in and figure out what percentage of Ultamar is whatever, what percentage of, you know, each neighborhood, so to speak, in Brisbane, how those demographics shake out. So that's why-
We can review existing documents. For example, all the demographics stuff is in your housing element. So, I mean, we have it all.
General, yeah.
So we can have, we can have that conversation about existing information and then take it from the next step from there.
It's literally in Mitch's report for tonight.
I'm, I'm sorry if I, maybe I provided too much information, but anyway.
Tom was gonna answer me.
So, I think before I answer your question as phrased, for the council, term limits have nothing to do with California Voting Rights Act, the new act. The, the length of a term of a mayor, whether a mayor is elected by the city or by the council, nothing to do with California Voting Rights Act. The Voting Rights Act, and what you've heard about in the county and elsewhere, is, it's a big shift. In federal law, it used to be, and I'm not gonna go on and on, you all heard me once say, federal law is all about protected class. If, if X minority of all kinds, not just racial, is a protected class according to a legal test, then you can't discriminate against them in voting. The Voting Rights Act for California goes way beyond that. It basically says if a group is a protected class, and they should, when you look at population, be able to elect one of their own, I know that's for Councilwoman Cunningham, and they're not doing that, look a little closer. Doesn't mean anybody's guilty of anything or not, but look a little closer. Is there something you can do as a community to give this growing group who is a protected class a better chance at winning a seat? It's, it's very, I know that sounds imprecise, because it is imprecise, especially for a city the size of Brisbane. If, if you had ten thousand people, I'd be telling you, you should do it. There's a risk of liability, just do it. It's, it's gonna be hard for all of you. That said, this is not, I cannot stress enough, Brisbane, as I understand it, dealing with housing and things, unless something's really changed in the last ten years, there are, it, it's a rainbow of communities by religion, ethnicity, et cetera, and it, at least back then, it was not consolidated anywhere. And that makes it very, very hard. If a protected class lives next to a protected class who lives next to a non-protected class, and that goes on all over the city, district elections aren't gonna solve the problem. So it's, it's a tough, tough call, you are gonna need that data. I would encourage you to start with what Clay is suggesting, simply because it is better to figure out what you have than to go to a demographer and say, start from scratch.
Thank you, Tom.
Also, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom was in that meeting, but just, I live at the ridge, and no one is elected on the city council from the ridge is not what's considered a protected class. So simply just wanting to have representation from a geographic area, not with, you know, race particularly in mind, or so on and so forth, just, is not, is not like a, a reason to justify having a district, like, in the way that it's played out in arguments that have been made in California courts thus far. Am I saying that right, Tom?
Yeah, a region alone, location alone is not a protected class. It's the inherent aspects of, of our different communities, but again, it's not, this is not race. The list is pretty long. Race is one of them, but it's not alone.
So, Colleen, you wanted to say something?
I don't think we're so far apart on this. We can dwell on details, we have to start somewhere, we need to be pragmatic about it, even hiring a consultant. Are you going to rely just on what they tell you, or are, are we going to be informed? I've done some hours of research, and I learned a lot, so I would have already some things I would be asking a consultant. Each of us can do that. I think Brisbane is very aware of diversity. How many women are on the council right now? Some people don't like that. So we could say part of Brisbane embraces it and part of Brisbane does not. There's diversity on this council. I think that, again, what Clay's suggesting about taking information we have, bringing it back for the subcommittee, subcommittee has some time to work through, do a little research, think of questions, it's going to move forward. And, and this is something, I think Brisbane will actually enjoy going through this process and finding out some answers, because we all have assumptions, and a lot of times, my assumptions are wrong. I want facts, and I think we all deserve that. So let's, let's go pragmatically on this, I don't wanna throw money at the wall for answers. Thank you.
So does staff have enough direction to move forward with this and, and bring it back to the subcommittee?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that brings us to light and airy, item number H, a presentation of a report detailing the economic position of the city of Brisbane during the period of 2013 to 2023. Welcome, Mitch Bull.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, my name is Mitch Bull, I am the Economic Development Director for the city, and I'm here to present you with a white paper report that we've been working on for a little over a year, detailing the economic position of the city as it stands in 2023 compared to 2013. Why did we decide to do this? About a year ago, I sat with the Economic Development Subcommittee, and it occurred to me that we did a economic development, development action plan in 2013 in, in, in response to the problems that the city had during the recession in 2008, where Crocker Park was forty percent empty. And what were we going to do to diversify our economy, to get it away from one type of VWR type of business, that one business could leave and take half your tax revenue with it? So there were many items in that report in 2013 of what we should be looking at doing. I wanted to put together a report showing what happened in the last ten years. Did we do what we thought we should do? How much could we influence it? How much do market forces influence it that we don't have any control over? And what changes have come to the city? And so, so this report, you know, will, will give you the details of the strength of the city right now, and how diversified it is compared to where it was prior to 2013, and how we got there. Because my, my bigger concern was, as we, for lack of a better word, turn people out, you know, from city manager to staff members to, to eventually myself, there's gonna be institutional knowledge lost that, you know, we don't have the next book written of how we got from A to B. So that's, that's really what this report is. It, it, it's a snapshot of where we are in 2023, it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight pages, and it, and it gives you, it gives you some demographics, it gives you some income numbers. All that comes from the, the 2020 census, and, and San Mateo County updates their census numbers as well. So, you know, we worked with planning, we worked with finance, I worked with outside real estate consultants, not consultants, but potential developers, because, like it or not, we know Brisbane very well. The Greater Bay Area still doesn't know where Brisbane is. When you say, I work in Brisbane, I go, where's that? They have no idea. And we've been here sixty-three years, and they still don't know we exist.
We like it that way. Just kidding.
And, 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 you know, we're small, but I think we're mighty. And that's part of this, too. My goal is to get this information out to prospective companies, and part of it's marketing the city. You know, now, one of the good things is when I started writing this in, in 2020, early 2023, we were one hundred percent leased in Crocker Park. That's the first time it's ever happened. And that's, you know, part of it's some things we've done, part of it is cities like San Francisco and Burlingame are tearing down their, their warehousing districts and putting in what they think is biotech, or, or housing, or whatever. So the market relies on us to be here. Now eventually, our buildings will be changed over to housing, or whatever, whatever the owners choose to do, working with us. So we've also gone through a recession and the COVID-19 pandemic, which had a tremendous impact on the city in some ways. Our hotels lost seventy to eighty percent of their business from 2019 to 2020. They're coming back. They're not back to pre-pandemic levels, but they're coming back, and that's a good sign. The investment in the city between 2013 and 2023 has been immense. We have more than doubled the value of the buildings in the city. All you have to do is look at Sierra Point to see some of that. And that's a good thing for Brisbane in that we want to have businesses that want to be here. It was not long ago when we were perceived, like it or not, of being unfriendly to businesses. And we had to sit with prospective developers that were looking to acquire properties in Brisbane, and we had to make our case why they should look at us instead of looking at South City or San Francisco. Those are easy choices. This is not an easy choice. They know they have, you know, a citizenry that cares about what goes here. They know they have a council that listens and looks at every project, okay? A lot of cities don't care. They don't have that kind of detail. So what I wanted to do was put this down of what the council did, what the staff did, and how we got from A to B from 2013 to 2023. And that's what I have in front of you. It breaks down into a profile of the city, because people outside don't know anything about us. They don't know our census, they don't know our demographics, they don't know our income, they don't know our education levels. Yeah, you can go to the census and pull that down if you want to, but I think it is helpful to have a snapshot pamphlet or report that shows you at this time, this snapshot, this is what it says. This is who we are as a city, okay? And then there's a crash. What did we do? Who did we bring in? What, we brought in the Presidio School, we brought in the Urban Land Institute, they gave us ideas. Some of those ideas panned out. Some of those ideas didn't pan out due to market, market influences. Nobody predicted COVID was coming, you know? And, and so how did we, as a city and a staff and a council, react to when VWR leaves? What did you do? You've rebuilt that tax base. How did you do it? Well, this details how you did it. And it's, it's a great credit to the staff and the council to take these steps to do that. And it is, it's a great credit to the staff and the council to take these steps to do that. I wanted to make sure that future council members, future staff members, our future city manager have an idea of how we got here. Because that may impact what you need to do five years from now or 10 years from now. So my, my, my question to you is please read the report. I've already gotten some comments back. And, and let us know because I'm not releasing it until you guys have a chance to go through it and put your two cents into it as well. Madison?
I think just for reading sake, can you label the principal employers in Brisbane 2023, page 19?
Yep.
Can you number them? Because it's hard to tell if the, it's going this way or back and forth, back and forth in terms of highest to lowest because they're in two columns.
Okay.
But I can see that it goes back and forth when it's alphabetical down here, right?
It does because it's, it's by number of employees, but I, I will go through that. Okay.
So just number it so you know which way, what, who's number two? Because I can't tell if it's Lima or Expediter's.
Thank you. I will do that. And I will also, as Karen had mentioned to me earlier, take out some of the acronyms and expand it so people know what they're talking about.
It's interesting how there are so many of these people already that are on this list that are not here.
Oh, there's some, yeah.
Yeah. Cannabis is a interesting market, interesting business right now. So that's my only terrifying comment.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Colleen?
I read the report. Thank you very much. It's very enlightening. There's a lot of things to deduce from it. Some takeaways I got just to share with everyone. When we look at the list for principal sales taxpayers, you notice biotechs are not on there. That's, that's troubling, should be troubling for any city with lots of biotechs. And when we look at, what else was it here? The upside that we've increased our tax revenues 69%, which is a real positive. But then we all know in the past year how prices, cost of goods have escalated astronomically. And, and maybe we need double that now. But I, I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying, I think this is also really valuable. This as a snapshot, as you said, to evaluate where are we going? What are we doing? And what has always come up is how do we diversify our revenue base? And that is easy to say and hard to do. And it's a concern with all kinds of other peninsula cities, not just Brisbane. But I think that you learn a lot from history. So this is extremely valuable because it shows where, where we benefited from planning and maybe where we need to reevaluate where we go from here. So thank you very much for that.
Well, one of the points I wanted to make is all cities are at the mercy of the market. And you, you can do all the planning you want, but if the market doesn't support what you have to offer, there's going to be challenges. And we have challenges and I've listed challenges at the very back of what we need to look at for the future. So again, please read it. Thank you for reading it.
I think it's also important to note, since you brought this up, I don't think that biotech companies would be at, really on the list at all for sales tax. But business license tax maybe.
Well, they would be for business license tax. And, and they're, they're not, they're not that different from a corporate headquarters. And I worked for Hitachi for 14 years at Sierra Point. Our divisions that sold televisions or recorders, yes, they brought income in. But, you know, 400 people in one division didn't sell anything that was a sales thing. So they, you, we didn't get any revenue from that portion of the business. That's the problem with having gleaming corporate headquarters. You know, I mean, it's great to have a corporate headquarters, but if they're not selling, you're not getting a lot of money other than the, you know, the property taxes and, you know, whether you can put a employee tax. And, and that's the other thing you need to look at. Do you do a headcount tax eventually? There's other ways to do this.
Was this the case when we had like eBay and Walmart?
Well, Walmart was, was selling.
Was selling. So the RealReal too. RealReal was selling, but it was just, yeah.
Exactly.
And, and I understand the difference. Councilmember Davis, between those that produce sales tax and those that don't. I was just simply trying to make the point that where we don't have that sales tax, are we adequately getting business tax to justify the services that we're providing them? Because they're taking up space that could be a tax base. So we need to find a way, yes.
Revenue base.
Revenue base. Thank you.
Well, again, you know, some cities have looked at, you know, square footage taxes. Where you look at the size of the building and you get a piece of that based on the size. So if you have a building that holds 500 people, they're going to pay more per square foot. Now labs take up a lot of room with less employees.
Yes.
There's all kinds of other ramifications to that.
Well, maybe internally for the council's sake, it might be good to have a list of who are the top payers in business license tax. So we can see where there's trends. I don't know that that's something we really want to release to the public, but.
No, we probably wouldn't. And, and, and again, I went to both the finance group and planning and, and seeing what can we release and what we can't. We can't release our sales tax, major sales tax contributors. We can't rank them by how much. It's all alphabetical for that reason.
Yeah, I'm just going to note that on the, the major businesses in town, the major corporations in town, which a lot of them are the life science. We do have the business license tax that, that generates monies for our capital program. So that's been in place for about 15 years. So there, there is an extra tax that they pay on that. The other thing I would just note, and I think Mitch has referred to it, is that while life science doesn't pay, you know, there's not a sales tax base to it. They definitely drive the property values of those buildings. And that is property tax, not just for us, but also for the school district.
Well, that's also when you get into like impact fees and what, you know, you, that information can also inform your conversation about impact fees and like, should our businesses have, be having a greater responsibility to fiscally contribute to the city's budget every year? And so obviously that's not a conversation for now, but that is, that factors into that conversation later.
Any comments Cliff or Karen?
No, but thank you Mitch. And, you know, we saw the, the document during our economic development subcommittee meeting. I do owe you some, some feedback. I apologize. So.
It's okay.
It's great to have a reminder. So.
I enjoyed reading it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just, I, I think it'd be remiss to let you go without thanking you for changing the perceptions that the outside world has about Brisbane. That's huge, right there. That's significant. That's an investment to the future and you've managed to do that.
I've, I'm one of many that's helped to try that. Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any, quickly Mitch, do you have any trends that you're seeing or anything that's you're concerned about with respect to Sierra Point? Because Sangamo went out. I believe that you got a warrant, no, we got a warrant notice for Jansen.
Jansen Pharmaceuticals is being closed.
And so, you know, I think it's interesting to ponder because so much of what's proposed at the Baylands is going to be life science buildings. And yet we have already existing, brand new life science buildings with some of the biggest, I mean, Johnson &amp; Johnson is one of the biggest pharmaceutical companies in the world. And it's very adjacent to Oyster Point, which is the capital of biotech. At least in California, I mean, at least in, in the United States, if not the world, Boston would be second rate. But I think it's a little bit, you know, it starts to raise maybe some concern because those are all similar industries in a similar geographic area with relatively new buildings and a lot of investment. And so is it just because, I mean, I'm hearing like a lot about layoffs in the biotech sector. So do you have any like insights and, or predictions or kind of any thoughts on that?
I don't have my magic eight ball that says, ask again later.
Get with it Mitch.
But there's a lot of layoffs in the tech sector too.
Right.
I mean, you're seeing a lot in Mountain View and Cupertino and Sunnyvale. Biotech is kind of like casino gambling. If you are the investor. If they have a, a, a process that solves the cancer treatment, the Alzheimer's treatment, and it's approved by the FDA, then they, they're great. They're, they're rolling. Their investors are happy. They hire more people, they do more work. When a therapeutic doesn't work, doesn't get the approval, doesn't get the results in, in the human tests that they do, that Sangamo has, has like one product.
The hemophilia product.
And when it didn't work the way they wanted to work, they're not closing, they're retrenching and moving back to Richmond because they need to downsize the company to save money. Jansen Pharmaceuticals, of course Johnson &amp; Johnson owns them. And Johnson &amp; Johnson decided to retrench it and take it back east. We know what, what Jansen did. They were the third COVID shot. And it worked well, maybe not as well as Moderna and Pfizer, but it worked well. The problem is less people are getting shots. They, they roll out what they expect the business to be. And, and, and the, the COVID vaccination companies expected a lot more business out of this. Well, they, they didn't get it and they're downsizing and retrenching. Now, as big as that is over there, it's 55 people.
Right.
Which is not a huge company. It's, you know, and it's unfortunate.
Sangamo's like 70, 70, I think it was like 75.
I, I mean, they're not huge. However, they're high profile because they have their names on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Now, these buildings are basically new and remodeled. There will be people that want to come in here. And I believe that Health Peak and the other landlords are going to actively, you know, market this. And it's, it's a great place to be. So I expect they will be taken out and refurbished and whatever they need to do to get another biotech or another tech company in, they will do that.
Meanwhile, Genesis is getting leased and so there's going to be.
I mean, Genesis, you know, Frehno has like 400 employees right now. And they're expected to grow. And they're moving in. So it, it's, 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 sometimes you win and sometimes you don't. The, the downside of being 100% leased at Crocker Park a year ago was we were turning companies away that were coming in and asking, do you have space? Well, now we have some space and we're working with some companies that are looking at, at coming in and doing some different things. So again, it's, 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 it's nice to be wanted. And we still are in a position with our proximity to Silicon Valley, our proximity to Genentech and San Francisco. We're in a great place.
In the airport.
And I still think we're, we're, I think the future is much brighter than even it was 10 years ago.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak in regards to this? Not seeing anybody jumping up. Do we have anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. That will bring us to staff reports for the city managers' report on upcoming activities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Got four items tonight. As you know, we've been working on pavement, on visitation. Lower visitation will, work will start on Monday, March 25th at 8:00 AM. No parking will be allowed between San Francisco Street and Mendocino during work hours of 8:00 to 5:00 PM. People park on the street and need to use their car, they need to make sure it's moved out of the zone by 8:00 AM. We did have staff as well as the contractor put notice out. Matter of fact, Caroline and her, Matt actually walked the street, I think, earlier today or tomorrow, yesterday. So we were able to make contact with many of the business owners. The second item is a reminder that an arborist from Plan ITGO will be in town for the next couple of weeks, starting Tuesday, performing an inventory of our public trees. The work has been budgeted out of the open space and ecology committee and will provide the committee and staff with a thorough assessment of trees located on city property. Third is the last meeting. The council directed city clerk to open recruitment for a couple of committees and boards. You can find more information about our open seats on the city's inclusion in Diversity Equity and Accountability Committee, IDEA Committee, and the Open Space and Ecology Committee, as well as the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District on the city website. The deadline to apply is Tuesday, April 30th, 5:00 PM. Lastly, we are taking applications for young people interested in developing leadership skills as part of our leader training, LIT program. This is for rising 7th to 11th graders. And completed LIT hours may be used for community service hours. Applications are being accepted now through the Friday September, uh, Friday, April 26th. This is the report for tonight.
And, and just clarification, Clay. The LIT program, is that for just residents of Brisbane or is that open to all 7th to 11th graders?
Residents? It's open to, I mean, told it's open to all. So if you, obviously our school district is bigger than just Brisbane. So I think that the idea is that.
So it's in our school district?
I think that's the focus. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted a little clarification. Thank you. That brings us to mayor and council matters. Do we, who'd like to begin with countywide assignments and subcommittee reports?
Something. Tom, just interject if you don't want me to talk about this. But not really a subcommittee report, but I just want the public to be aware that the TA has a survey open right now where they're asking for feedback about transit. And since we had a member of the public bring up the commute.org shuttle, they fund that shuttle. I actually had a conversation with them. They're looking for projects that are along the, are that are along 101 and along major, you know, major traffic corridors. Ways to spend between like $500,000 and $20 million, which in traffic funds, you know, TA funds, those are considered small projects. So looking to address the entire, you know, county. And they're wanting specifically feedback from Brisbane right now, which, you know, Brisbane is obviously a small blip, right? On projects for the whole county. So it's really important that if you have feedback that you give it. But from my conversation with them, I also mentioned the commute.org shuttle and how widely used it is and how underserved Brisbane is by public transit. And how maybe there can be enhancements to their route, whether that's, you know, extending it to be on the weekends or to have more stops like going out to Sierra Point Parkway or, you know, Caltrain, different, not just like focus on getting people through Crocker and to Bay Shore. So it would be great if the commute, commute.org shuttle is something that you utilize. And you would like to see that enhanced. Definitely respond to that survey because when I started talking about that, their eyes lit up and they were nodding like this is something that they hadn't thought of, that they felt like they could use money to make an impactful difference. And of course, if you have any other comments about biking or transit in general, public transit, respond about, you know, any general things too. But if the commute.org shuttle specifically is important to you, I think that we can get, we can enhance that service if enough people say that it's important. So. And then I can work with Caroline to maybe get information out, a, a link to where people can fill out that survey. We can circulate it through the blast.
Thank you, Colleen. Do you have any?
I have none, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing from Cliff? How about Karen?
Are we reporting out from public out or not?
I think we're reporting out next meeting.
Okay, then I have nothing. Thank you.
I don't think I had anything. So that's all good. That brings us to written communications. City clerk, did we have any written communications?
Council received correspondence from the Leadership Council on March 8th and from Michelle Salmon on March 21st regarding CCNRs for a landmark at the North, Northeast Ridge.
Okay. And that will bring us to oral communications, number two. Is there any members of the public? I see that Paul. Is there any members of the public, I see that Paul Buschall would like to speak. Come on up.
Good to see you walking, Paul.
Thanks. Thank you, council. Paul Buschall, Brisbane resident. And it was good to hear this evening that the Open Space and Ecology Committee has asked the city to have our trees assessed by an arborist. I don't want to beat this thing to death, but, you know, for years I brought this up. And when I brought it up at the, your budget meeting, you know, within the budget meeting criteria, it talks about community concerns. It's all the way at the end, after all the other groups have been satisfied. So, you know, when I come in and talk about something, I'm concerned, but there's a concern. And I just wanted to remind you the comments that were made by our city attorney and city manager. The city attorney said that the comments I made when I said that we would be liable for these city trees if something happened to somebody or infrastructure, there's three criterias: dead, diseased, or improperly maintained. And that's what the arborist is going to find. That while most of these trees, especially eucalyptus trees, are probably healthy to some degree, they were improperly maintained. And that goes for private property as well. So the city attorney, city attorney said that my comments were presumed facts. I mean, I brought it up and what more would I need to do other than staff to find out if those were presumed facts or not? And then the city, uh, city manager said that my comments were irresponsible when I talked about liability. We would be liable. Think about what a lawsuit would, could cost if you had dangerous trees and somebody got killed or knocked down our power coming into town or a whole bunch of things. And so I'm not saying the sky is falling. And I really appreciate the fact that we're taking it to the level of having an arborist evaluate these trees. But in the future, you know, when comments are made by, whether it's staff or council, that are irresponsible in themselves, I wish somebody would call those comments out as opposed to just letting them be said and most people thinking, well, that's probably what it is. Those were probably presumed facts and those comments were irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else liking to speak on a subject that was not on our agenda tonight?
We have a hand raised from Diana.
Okay, please go ahead.
Hello, city council. Thank you for taking my call. I, a couple of things. I want to do a big shout out to Congress Councilmember Cunningham for raising the fact about, I, I've been watching city council meetings for two or three years now. And I hear, oh, it's only three thousand dollars. It's only ten thousand dollars. I mean, that to me just strikes terror in my heart. You have several people in the city who three or ten or seven, I mean, even a thousand dollars is a huge amount of money. So I just would ask the council to be cognizant of saying it's only, it's, it's, it's relative, right? So I appreciate your consideration of that. And thank you for, to city council about talking about protective class. I am an employer and I know protective class includes a lot of things, including age. And I don't know if employee and employer class includes the same protective class as it might for looking at districts. So I think that's part of this consideration of looking at district elections. So I just think we need to be very careful with that because I think we have, Brisbane's demographics are leaning towards older people. Thank you.
Thank you. And city clerk, do we have anyone else that would like to speak?
No further hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine, is that nine thirty-four? Nine oh three. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Last week.